The meeting is beginning, that's 7:05 PM. We took recess, Alabot, Solonite Architect was making a presentation, we'll resume that presentation, so go ahead, I appreciate that. If you'd like to recap anything you've shared.
Let us come back to the, again, we're on option A, deduct alternatives. So that's the four plans we discussed. Anybody have any questions on that? And then this is a schematic graphic for the site plan attached to those drawings. And that represents 86 general parking spots plus 15 first responder parking spots. And that would be a new, all-new paving. So the new paving for the fire station would be thick enough to handle the fire trucks. And then the parking lot would be reoriented to give more parking and to promote better flow to the parking lot.
I have a couple of questions about the parking lot.
You go ahead.
So is it, on the west side, is the old one removed?
Yes.
So there won't be a one-way, two-one-ways, or any one-way?
Right, yeah, this, so, great question, the proposed paving, the new proposed paving is this medium gray and that's overlaid on top of the aerial photo that shows where some of the existing features are now.
Is the whole thing eight inches?
It is, yeah, center has the whole parking lot.
And that's why, so your husband and I didn't leave anything in place that's existing?
That's why, you know, we came up with this design, not initially, but through multiple efforts. And starting with the location of the fire station and having that a set distance off of the east property line to be able to bring apparatus out onto the drive day without crossing the property line or crossing any sidewalk, which you're not supposed to do. And once we set the location of the fire station, as you can see, it fights into where the existing parking lot is. And that kind of set off a discussion about the existing layout of the parking lot, the use of the parking lot, the durability of it. And if we were starting to need to rework it, it basically led us down the path of looking at a new improved layout that would pay dividends for the city hall and the fire station.
That's all west-east of here, right? That's north.
Yes, up is north, so here's the parking lot.
So the parking lot is north and the fire station is west of this.
East.
East.
Yep, so this is Park Ridge Road up at the top here, which is.
Okay, that's Park Ridge, okay.
Yeah. Second Avenue off to that side and then Third Avenue.
East, yeah.
Yep.
So, okay, so, one of the nice things that I really like about that parking lot, even though it's just for the fire station, we have been hearing for a number of years when we needed more room for our watermelon days, there's the people that did money, farmers market or the market, we just don't have any place for that. Over on Second Avenue now, almost all the time, two or three times a week, we've got 30, 35 cars parked on the street because it's the kids doing after-school activity and the bus picks them up. Originally, there was a five or six parking places next to the park. And they started that and it just keeps expanding. If we had that, then our school buses could be using that and they'd be parked over here. And that would, we've had one, just one or two, where it happened on a weekend and we rented out the pavilion and people come to get some beer. And there was no parking for a block and a half because the school gets it. Happened to have some extracurricular activity going on, that's where the bus picked them up. I, I, there's some expense there, but I can see community use of that and a lot of different ways that our community is growing. They keep wanting to do these things and an eight-inch cement slab is an ideal place for a lot of things. Thank you.
The rationale for all of the medium inch, what's that?
That's so that it has the durability to handle any fire truck traffic and any other large truck traffic. So six inches is standard for parking lots that don't anticipate seeing any kind of traffic. And that, I believe that's what makes this the parking lot.
How much of that space would be, if we actually had used that space for something, how much of that space could we use without having any impact on the fire trucks? That's just general storage space, I mean, that isn't going to impede the flow of the trucks in and out on an emergency.
Correct, so the outflow of trucks on a call, they're going to head out east on the Second Avenue, which allows them to tee up to an intersection and then go up and down Park Ridge or toward Fort Worth. And then the return lane for the fire trucks would be back off of Third Avenue here to the west and then along this return drive.
I was just, what I was thinking about was maybe tractor parking. We're looking now at a number of citizens that are driving tractors and they're parking on the streets now, dead-end streets, which that won't be a dead-end anymore, or they're going to want the city to provide something or, you know, it's just, as we're growing, there's a number of cities around here that allow truck drivers to park their rigs on the weekends and stuff, it is, I just wanted to make sure if we would ever allow that, it wouldn't have any negative impact on the emergency responders.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep, response traffic is, yeah, exactly, purposely separated from any kind of citizen.
Excellent, thank you. I knew the guys did a lot of planning on this, I just wanted to get that out of the public. Thank you all.
Go ahead. So then, this is within those 100% drawings that exist right now today, we do have a series of prior optional deducts. So those are things that could be taken out of the project after the bids come in. So the reason we do that is to have a hard bid number for those options. So those are things that the council will be able to deliberate and decide which alternates to either keep in the project or to remove due to cost. That's all, we've got a slide for each of those deducts. The first one is the south end of the building, so the end that faces the cornfield, is in the drawings right now to be, to have a brick finished area in this darker van here down towards the bottom. We have a deduct alternate, so that would be a cost savings to switch that to a metal panel system on a pre-ensured metal building here. And that would be a savings of around, we're estimating a savings of around $27,000. The important thing to know is that we would set up the bid sheet so that this is a separate item. And all of these deducts are separate items that you get to see on bid day, the true cost of it. And allows you to make good decisions based on that information.
You said that's a south wall?
Correct.
My concern with something going on the south other than good is that is going to be an expansion area for the town. I'm just concerned about what would go there. We want to put 300,000, 400,000 dollar homes out there. They aren't going to be happy with an industrial wall out there as opposed to something that's going, which would eventually cause some property value deterioration that everyone in the city does. Can we put that back? If we go from the metal originally, what would be the cost to make it look so it would fit into a residential area in the future, I guess is what I'm asking.
Sure, it would, I don't have an exact figure to that, but it would certainly cost more to go back at a later date.
At this point in time, I can see the savings there, but I think we really need to look at those numbers long-term. So we, to me, everything's a cost-benefit ratio. Where's the benefit and the cost long-term? Thank you.
Deduct two is insulated overhead doors, move all glass overhead doors. So right now in the base bid, all of the apparatus bay, overhead doors, which are these white squares. In the base bid, we have them as all glass, so that means it's full vision lights, top to bottom. And that has a lot of benefits, letting a lot of natural light in during the day. It allows visibility of the apparatus, the fire trucks at night. And so, if you guys went to Solon Fire Station, they have those. So you can see how that really affects the apparatus bay. But then we have a deduct alternate to go to mostly insulated overhead doors. So that's where the top three panels and the bottom two panels would be insulated. So that's a metal sandwich panel insulated, which is what most people are familiar with on garage doors. And then two panels of vision glass so that you still have some daylight coming in and the ability to see in and out from the apparatus bay. That would, we're estimating, if we went to the insulated doors as shown, would be a savings of about $120,000.
If we go to the insulated doors as part of the bid process, those insulated doors are going to have a considerable R-value. I'd like to make sure that our bidders, our mechanical people, give us both options on that. I'm, with my experience, we've got an awful lot of square footage there. We may be able to lower the size of the HVAC system and we would definitely lower the utility bills and stuff with the insulated doors as opposed to. I think we need some numbers there to balance that, again, cost-benefit there. And that's not a garage. This is a shop area, these guys are in that thing a lot. I know because I live right next door. And having insulated doors, I've gone five different ways on garage doors and shop doors. Those insulated doors have a cost benefit in my mind. If we could get that, just put a note in there that when we go into our bids to get us some numbers, thank you.
Deduct three is a shelf space with mechanical electrical plumbing stub-ins to move the mezzanine build-out. So in the design, we do have, we're taking advantage of the high roof area to gain additional space inside the building. And the base bid plans were what I showed earlier, with the full build-out, a four dorm rooms, a bathroom and a kitchen and a day room. The deduct would be the stub-in for that. So it could be added later, but to not incur the cost of filling that area out day one, it would be a concrete port that would have those mechanical electrical plumbing stub-ins so that things could be braked out and hooked up to a pedestal or date without disturbing the area below. And that is, comes to a potential savings of around $300,000.
Me and you. If we don't do the build-out, but put the bathroom in there. That gives us a private shower and an extra bathroom, that's a lot of area up there. And if they utilize that for anything other than storage, it's quite a ways from there to the bathrooms downstairs. I'd like to get that number on adding that bathroom up there for them. We're talking volunteers here, anything we could do to make it easier and better for them while they're in this building. I, again, I see the value in having that bathroom up there. I can't see that that's going to change that number that much. I want the numbers out there, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Deduct four is the return apron to the new parking lot in lieu of the return apron off of Third Avenue. So this is, again, this is the site plan. We've got the proposed new parking lot here, north of City Hall. Kind of this white outline here to City Hall of City Hall. The dark gray box is the proposed fire station with the exit drive out to Second Avenue. So the original plan I was showing you is a return drive off of Third Avenue. The fire trucks returning from a call would come back in this way. But in this deduct alternate, the same quantity as the concrete, we're instead showing them coming back through the new parking lot off of Second or Third Avenue and then turn again. And we're estimating a savings, attempted savings of about $130,000 on that. And again, this would all be that eight-inch Portland cement concrete that's able to handle the fire truck weight and repeat. So then that brings us to a summary of option A. If we were to select all of the deduct alternates, all of those cost savings options that I just outlined, one through four, that would have a, it's like this, that would give us a construction bid cost estimate from us of $5,441,026. And a project cost estimate of $6,45,799. So it's about a $600,000 investment.
All that is available, if we move forward, with the bids and stuff, we just still, all of that is possible.
Correct, so all that would be in play with the drawing staff prepared right now.
We don't have to do any LAs or any, we could move there and still do all of that.
That's correct.
Thank you.
So then that brings us to options D and C. So this is essentially the same floor plan. Biggest change is the reduction on the south end of the apparatus bay, which is the end, highlighting with the cursor, of reducing that by eight feet. Bring that in to the left of the page. So what that does is it eliminates some of that lay-down space for extra gear, extra storage. And it does eliminate the separate SCBA bottle fill room. And it puts that equipment out on the apparatus bay floor. And what that does is it allows us to be able to locate the fire station on the site tighter to the east property line and narrowly missing the existing parking lot. So the intent of this layout is to preserve as much of the existing parking lot as possible and still locate the proposed fire station on this site. It does, unfortunately, due to being so close to the property line, we not technically be able to park a fire apparatus on this exit drive. But there may be some things that could be done with, you know, closing the street if it weren't to go through, that would allow you to bring trucks out of this side. Or we do have a lot of room on the backside of the building. Be able to bring apparatus and park them outside. This does have a smaller number of total parking spots. So this layout has 49 general parking spots and 12 first responder spots. So the 12 first responder spots would be in the dark gray, which would be signed to be firefighter parking only. So that's for the emergency responders to come in, be able to park, get out, get into the station, load up and go. It would preserve the existing parking lot while adding on to it to gain some additional spaces along the perimeter. And then it does allow for three, as a deduct alternate, to still be in play as well. So in this scheme, with all the deducts taken, our opinion of probable construction cost would be $4,452,083 and a total project cost of around $5,078,280. This is the lowest cost option that we have as part of this presentation. And the building size is reduced from 14,000 square feet to 13,300. So it's essentially 700 square feet that were taken off the south end of the apparatus bay to squeeze it in there to be able to make a bid. Are we gonna wait?
No.
Think, we gotta wait for public comment probably? All right.
Is there a rule in place, Hill?
Yes. Save your questions for later.
If you guys can just make sure that question gets captured.
And then this is option C, which is option B, except bringing back the return drive off of Third Avenue. Same reduced footprint of the building to get it to fit on-site. And that gives us a probable construction cost of $4,718,195 and a potential total project cost of $5,307,705. So again, the big difference between the two is the return apron. This reintroduces it off of Third Avenue. I'll go back a slide. And this brings it in off of the existing parking. And then this, the downside to this option is that returning fire trucks would be driving on the existing paving, which probably hasn't expected service life of 30 years, of which you probably 10 years in yourself. Not sure when City Hall was built, depending what changed the bed. But 10, 12 years in, then it would, probably would. Probably would incur deterioration of this portion of the paving. May use as a return lane. So just a factor to keep in mind. That brings us to the conclusion of our portion of the meeting.
D and C, are they ready to go now?
They're not. B and C are not ready to go, so they would necessitate a redesign. And we've put some timelines together with the goal being that we can still be able to get construction underway this year. Would probably push it more to the fall timeline instead of the summer start. But as long as you can get construction started and essentially get putting some.
That's what we said last year and it didn't happen.
Right, right.
If we miss another year, we're not going to have fireworks. I'm sorry. I'm hearing too many people that are going to quit.
Those, these two new options would not require another FEMA approval, correct?
That's correct, that's our understanding because we're staying within the footprint of the site that was approved by FEMA and substantially the same design that's been approved.
So we would, we wouldn't lose the FEMA and although there would be some redesign, we'd still really push to start this year and not miss the construction season, correct?
That's correct.
So that's a possibility.
I should have told you last, I don't know, just being real here.
Right. Yeah, we finally got through the process, which is a process.
Maybe if you redesign and you run into a problem, the potential is there.
Sandy, for the FEMA grants, is this disaster related? Is there also assistance to firefighter grants? There's other grants that seem to be specific to fire from FEMA. This is to the disaster.
Have you looked into Sandy? Since we have now, we have the disaster, there's over 100 disaster, and we will rebuild. Aren't there some other government grants or funding possibly available that we could apply for if we had staff and time to look into that? If we do this project, this is a G O R. We aren't limited on where we get the money to pay those annual payments, correct?
And I would defer to the mayor who's more involved in this. But this $700,000 coming from FEMA is only eligible for this because the fire station was destroyed at the time.
But there are other fundings for firemen and stuff like that. And this doesn't stop us from applying or getting any of that or even corporate donations and stuff. Like, the thing I'm saying is.
I'm not aware of the other.
Thank you.
Sandy says, there's a duplication of benefits clause there. Even after the money is obligated, the prime hole close out. This is determined to be one of these resources that are federal dollars. Those have to be coming for federal dollar nature. So it's a process at the end of the project, help close out.
So we don't need to layer that.
Let me say it in front of her. We have a document that I can share with you. It's technical because it's FEMA and federal funds. Essentially, FEMA came in and evaluated what the fire station was destroyed. And they will replace a like station. And all the projects I worked on, not one of them was replaced with a like station because governments work in buildings that are outdated, reduce size, aged and all those kinds of things. And that's the case in Atkins as well. So they approved $1.404 million. I mean, there's this very specific number, $1.4 million that FEMA approved. And the duplication of benefits means FEMA won't pay for anything that something else is paying for. And so what reduced their amount to about $700,000 was about the $700,000 you got for insurance. Because the city was insured, they will not duplicate those benefits of the insured.
They don't want to be the first payer.
And they won't pay for anything that's already been paid for. $1.4 is what FEMA absolutely maxed out at. And then when they found out that we had $648,000 or whatever the number was of insurance, they reduced that amount from $1.4 and that's how you got the number that you have today.
And that number is committed to?
Yes.
Let me have FEMA.
It is, and like the mayor said, closeout will finally, I mean, nothing, it's not obligated. We have an approved project today, we don't have an obligated project. It's perfunctory, it's, we expect it to not have any problems to be obligated. They will not obligate the funds until we go through this process and choose a design and a timeline that we commit to, and then they will obligate the funds and we'll be ready to build. We don't expect issues with that unless we delay. And are not able to tell them a design and a timeline. When they obligate those funds at the end of the project, they will do closeout and they will analyze everything we've done. And you get, they get kind of a second bite of the apple to tell us whether we're doing it right. Did everything right, it's important that we follow all their rules because it's federal money. And then you end up, you know, with the project. But the dollars, you know, and all the pieces I worked on, the dollars were there committed. And you're able to rely on it.
So there's an implication that we won't be able to seek other sources of funding during the prior closeout?
So the question was asked of me about bond maintenance. And what I got was assurance from our financial services budget that once we borrow money for this project and have a bond payment to make, which is what we've shown you throughout this project. Bonds are an investment by our investors, they're, they're an investment. Bonds are an investment by our investors. They're, they're an investment tool. So what she said was we really need to commit to at least half of the timeline, so about seven years of bond payments. But cities often pay off bonds early. Whether interest rates change, you do have funds coming in and you have cash flow that you want to reduce interest rates. So we absolutely have the ability to pay off those bonds early. And not, not year two or six, but in year seven, you could pay off the bonds if you found three million dollars, you know, to pay them off. Whatever the principal balance is. If, if the city comes into other funds, if you want to raise money some other way, you can pay off those bonds.
But if we didn't pay off the ones, we come in money early and make the bond payments, that just comes off of our tax revenue. So we can get the money. That's what I'm saying. If we get grants or corporate funds or stuff that comes into the city, we don't pay the bond off early. We make our annual payments, but then that, those dollars do not get put onto the levy and the taxpayers do not see that.
And, and just to be clear, you've seen all, you've seen the financial projections that show that essentially in, in the four million and under bond, after the fourth year, you have very, very minimal debt. You have very little debt coming from the tax levy. It is coming from taxing from financing. It is only eligible for approved projects like this one. So you can't use TIF to flower your streets, you know, to pay for personnel. And I mean, TIF is not available for those kinds of costs. It is available for a project like this one. And that's after year four, what is being paid for this. And just a reminder again about TIF, we talked about TIF during budget. Taxing from a financing is a combination of the city's taxes, the county's taxes and the school district's taxes. With some exceptions that the school districts get to keep. So this is a countywide payment that is being made for your fire station in the city of Atkins, serving county residents as well. And so it's important to note that, that, that most of the payments over the fifteen years is absolutely not coming from the tax levy.
Can we talk about some of those options or those new scenarios that Maggie sent over? Because the, the one I think that was presented before was four and a half million, which is what we've approved up to. But with these two new options and the reduced costs, then we wouldn't have to bond for that four and a half. So she sent over some, some lower numbers. Can we talk a little bit about those different options and what, what those look like? The four and a half, I believe, would the taxes or the cost of these six dollars a month.
Right.
For a two hundred thousand dollars for the fifteen years. But then the less, then we had an example with the four million and that was, that dropped the the taxes, two dollars a month for the fifteen years, but then the three and a half million and the three million, then it, it shows the six dollars a month again, but that's only for the first three years and then nothing after that, right?
Yeah, the, the, the things I would highlight in, in running what, what Maggie from Sphere ran to compare those scenarios. Once you get to four million dollars of borrowed the mass, the majority of tax levy impact, non-TIP tax levy impact is in the first three years. And it starts at a dollar thirty-eight. So, so our F Y twenty-four budget is twelve dollars and fifteen cents. The F Y twenty-five levy is twelve dollars and twenty-one cents. And included in both of those is that first year of a dollar thirty-eight. And it varies a little bit, but in the four point, the four million dollar option is a dollar thirty-eight. To be fair in this, at four point five, it's a dollar forty, so not, not a big difference. And that is what the city of Atkins is paying today. So that's already in your taxes. You're, you're paying that and you saw that on your tax bill in F Y twenty-four and you'll see it in F Y twenty-five. What the scenario does then is even in the four million dollar option, it's a dollar thirty-eight, a dollar twelve, a dollar seven on the levy in those first three years. And then it goes to thirty-eight cents, two cents, very, very minimal. And I mean, you could honestly do that same scenario where it's in those first three years that it's hit. When you get to three point five, it is by, it's the same thing, a dollar twenty-one in the current year. In current, I mean, F Y twenty-five, it starts July one, a dollar twenty-one, then it goes to eighty-nine cents and then eighty-five cents and then fifteen cents. In year, in the three million dollar option, it's a dollar four, sixty-seven cents, sixty-three cents. And in both of the three point five million and three million options, the township fire money of forty thousand dollars, that commitment that's been made by the fire township wouldn't be needed after year three to make the bond payment that could be to complete the cake on the tip. What Maggie heard at the February fifteenth open house was that there was concern about the township money continuing to support the fire department in other ways, not in the building. And so this was a scenario that would allow that. There are many ways, obviously. She wanted to be clear how that, how these funds could be attributed however. So if you wanted to continue to have that attribute to the, the tip money, the tip would be available for the project.
Yeah, public. Our question for John, the option C, which is the Third Avenue. The dark gray concrete areas, those were all sufficient for the trucks.
That's correct. That would all be the eight inch concrete.
Is there any? Can you describe the stormwater efforts on a project like that? I mean, how at this point?
You know, that, that's what would be the part of the redesign. So that's what the civil agency would be, that time and effort to really basically throw out their existing civil design and kind of start over. I know they do have some, there's some existing detention kept in the southwest corner. And I think it would propose some detention in the northeast corner. Does that answer your question?
Right, just the general, how would the stormwater, because I know that.
Yeah. Yeah, I think just real preliminarily, in this scenario, the fire station would sit maybe three, four or five feet below than the, than the parking lot, just the way that the ground falls off in that direction. So that may be a small retaining wall up against the existing driveway. Or in all likelihood, during construction, part of that existing driveway would be damaged and removed and then replaced, but then a small retaining wall would, would be needed there. And if, if the retaining wall is over thirty inches tall, the fence or some similar. Being needed at the top of the retaining wall without anybody falling off the edge.
And for the additional parking along the north and northeast of the areas that what percentage of that meets the requirement? I'm talking about that a little bit, where we lack on the parking capacity for those structures.
Yeah, I think, I don't remember the exact numbers on the required spaces. So I think together, City Hall and the fire station would require about seventy-six spots total. This gets us to forty-nine. So you're still not hitting a required. You still have to pass your.
Required by what?
Required by COVID, just by your city.
City's own.
The city's.
City's only word does.
So that's why you pass your, the city can.
Right, correct.
So your bid or your estimates for seven pointless three and a half million dollars when it came in at two million, nine thousand dollars?
I'm not actually sure where you, where the three and a half million dollar number came from. But go ahead and make your point out. I can get you on the numbers.
Yeah, I, that's what we were told when we toured the facility, that Solid Lanes estimate was at the three point five and it came in at two million dollars.
Yeah, actually two million, nine thousand. Yeah, I'm not, I've looked, I've tried to find where those numbers might have come from, I'm not a hundred percent sure. So we did do Center Point Fire and our, I put together kind of a, a cost estimate in day comparison earlier today. So I don't know if you had a chance to look, but basically our cost opinion, when it went out to bid in early twenty twenty-one was for just over two million dollars and the bid came in at one point eight million. So about two hundred thousand dollars below our cost of bidding.
So you're confident that those bids are gonna come in at your projected costs and your, your construction bid costs?
We're as confident as we can be with it, with the crystal ball. So it's, it's a bit of a guessing game, but we use the best data available nationally and we also use local data. And we use our personal experience. We have a, a similar sized fire station under construction right now for High Wata. And we were able to get a lot of cost data from that because that's, that's literally under construction as we speak. So that's about its real type of numbers.
My next question would be, this is similar to the Center Point Fire Station, our square footage. I went out and did some research online and it showed us at today's cost to, for construction, it would be approximately thirty-eight percent. That's basis pre-COVID, which Center Point was post-COVID. But I want, the only information that I could find out on the internet was pre-COVID versus post-COVID. So it said thirty-eight percent. So taking those figures into account, when I calculated out versus the same square footage, that would put us in at two million, seven hundred and sixty thousand dollars. And then I thought, well, maybe I'm, it did stay, stayed in there that you could be within two to five percent difference.
Sure.
Based on the regional area. And so I just added on ten percent. If you add on ten percent, basically you're still at under three million dollars. How, how does that figure in? Because they're basically the same size facility, same size everything. I, I'm just struggling with the dollar figures for our facility versus their facility. It just doesn't make all that good sense for me.
Yeah, I, you know what, Dave? I, I appreciate the, the research and, you know, if you look at C B R E, which is a nationally recognized, you know, real estate conglomerate. So, you know, they, they have pretty solid numbers and you know, we also wanted to kind of use our same methodology on Center Point Fire. So that was something that, that we ran. If we took Center Point Fire in today's dollars and run it through our process, what we came up with for that was about four point one million. So that shows you that it's still, that's, that's close to the, you know, most reduced option for Atkins Fire that we're looking at tonight of about four point five million. So I think that, that feels similar, right?
Yeah.
Right.
You're probably gonna get your, oh, sorry.
No, I mean, it's, it's, you know, I think industry is still grappling with all of the cost increases that kind of came out of COVID. And it's, it's been frankly difficult to get, to get good data. Construction data used to be just a steady, I mean, three percent a year, you could bank on it. And now, you know, I mean, to COVID, we saw, you know, ten percent, twenty percent, and that compounds the next year, another ten or twenty percent. So I think the industry is still trying to catch up to it. And again, I'll go back to, our best benchmark is, is that High Wata Fire Station, which is under construction as we speak, not that far away, with the same labor pool that would build this fire station. And so that's where, you know, I feel like it's my duty in your best interest to try to give you as accurate a numbers as I know how to give. Then maybe hopefully, I mean, I, again, I want to be the highest bidder because I know Michael, Michael and I aren't going out there to build it for you. So we want to make sure that we're educating you and giving you as good of information as possible. And it's realistic of a, a cost opinion as we possibly can. And avoid any kind of bid day sticker shot. I would love for it to be much lower, but I, but I can't tell you that it's gonna be lower.
Understood.
We don't know the bids until they come in.
So you're, let's just use what you just said, about four point one million dollars.
Sure.
Versus the, the fire station, Center Point, what are we, what is a million dollars that we're adding to this fire station that Center Point doesn't have?
Well, again, I would say that through our cost opinion, Center Point would be four point one. And our, our least cost, option B is four point four or five.
I misunderstood you, sorry.
Yeah, so I'd say we're about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars difference. And so, you know, a lot of that is no two stations are the same. You know, there's variability in the site, there's variability in other elements, but it's, I mean, that's, that's within, you know, it's within less than ten percent, right?
Well, that's, that's a significant, well, higher than body calculations than I got off from a reputable company.
Right. I mean, I'm, I'm right there with you, Dave. I would love for this to come whistling in at under three million, but I've got other data that makes me think that as much as I would hope it to be, may not be the case. And it's my duty to, to tell you what I think could be a possibility so that you can make appropriate decisions, bond appropriately. You know, the last thing we would want to do is have, have the numbers come in high and bond, bonding capacity not be there and then that sends the whole project.
Yeah, for a million dollars off, that makes a heck of a lot of more difficult decisions. A million dollars difference. I, my calculations were the worst case scenario is one three million based off of what Center Point had. That's where we should be at for our fire station because it's basically the same square footage. And the data that I got offline showed that maximum, we should be at less than three million dollars. So, but he's saying the information that Solid Lanes got would say that that would be four million, but we're still a million off from a reputable company that would offline that I got, I just, I'm and, you know, four million versus three million, if we're off by that, that's, that's significant, I mean, to me. And that, that's decisions right there that we got to utilize.
Yeah, the, you know, I mean, it's, that's the difficulty of the hard bid process, unfortunately, is that it's, it's a black box and you don't know the results until you put it out for bid. But bids are, you know, a lot of work for contractors to prepare, but it is then hard real data if you make actual decisions on it. So that's, that's why the, the process is in place of, you know, we can put it out for bids and the council has to approve the plans and also approve the bid. And so, you know, at that time, if it's grossly over budget, then obviously you're not obligated to, to move forward with that. The only way to get to that number is to put it out for bid. That's, that's, unfortunately, that's the process that is the legal way to build buildings, government buildings in the state of Iowa. And the one that, that FEMA requires us to follow. We looked at using a, a different delivery process on this, but it, it sounded like it maybe has a. there may be hesitation on FEMA's part to, to backfill us on it. So we had to abandon that route and stick with the traditional hard bid process.
I appreciate you putting any extra work to put the numbers together for what would look like to, to put in the Centerpoint Station.
So, the Centerpoint, if you, if you even take the Centerpoint at four point one, we're still at five point one. What's the difference between Centerpoint and that?
Four point one, you're saying the, the total product, excuse me, my wrong, total project estimate is four point seven compared to five million seventy-eight thousand. So the difference is about three hundred and forty-six thousand dollars, I think I did my math.
But there's, there's all project numbers out, was, oh, you're saying now the project, right? Oh, God.
No, no, there's also a six hundred thirty, six hundred thirty thousand.
All, all of this is part of the.
Right, but you just gotta take, if you want to take the construction, that is versus construction.
Centerpoint has a completely different.
I just wanted to make sure, because you're throwing around, you know, four point one, we've got to compare construction cost to construction cost and total cost to total cost. So we're taking total project cost, which includes the ancillary cost and all that, it's four point seven versus five. So it's not four point one to five, it's four, so it's three hundred and forty-six thousand dollars difference based on the numbers that you ran for, for both projects and comparing the two.
Yes, that's, that's exactly correct, so.
She helped me.
Yeah, good, yeah. It's, I mean, we do this all day long, but it's, it's confusing. So that's why we try to, try to provide both of those costs to you from a planning purpose. So the, the construction bid cost is that bid day cost. And that is the cost of the building and site improvements. And what's included in the building, what we like to say is if you can imagine people building it up, and shaking it upside down, everything that doesn't fall out, that's part of the construction cost. But the, the things that fall out are things like furniture, window treatments, those kinds of things. That's part of that ancillary cost. So that's things, you know, we try to help you make sure you set aside some money for furniture in case you want to need to buy some new furniture or set aside money for testing that goes into the, making sure the building's built the right way. But you don't get to like, own testing, it's just a part of the process. So those numbers are baked into the, the total project cost. And then the most significant chunk of that total project cost that I recommend you guys hold off to the side is project contingency, which is money set aside in case anything goes wrong, in case the contractor mobilizes and starts digging a hole for the foundations and finds something like an underground storage tank, which we have at Central Fire. So there are instances where you might find an old gas tank or oil tank and that has to, you have to pay to get that moved properly and cleaned up. And so that may be twenty-five to fifty thousand dollars that you have to spend, you weren't planning on spending, but you want that money set aside just in case. And then if you don't spend it, then you can use that contingency money to help pay your loans, pay the bond off faster. So that's, I just wanted to try to help kind of clarify the difference between the construction cost and the project cost.
I, I really truly appreciate that because I think everybody looks at it from a total project cost. And they should. But basically the total project cost isn't something we need to do now. And all we need to do is the construction aspects of it. And that is the key because you could fundraise for the rest of it and do whatever you want to do for the rest of it. But your, your cost for construction, that's what you should truly be looking at and that's all we.
That's why we try to provide.
Understood.
Numbers.
Understood, but it's very misleading if, if we don't, if we're looking at the total project cost, that means that I need to spend five million dollars, five point one on that option right there.
And we advise you to keep that in mind as, as the potential to have to spend. So my analogy is if you wanted to build, say, a new, a new house and that new house cost two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, you're probably gonna take out a loan for three hundred thousand dollars just to cover anything that comes up or anything that changes during construction.
Or I'm gonna have to cut something.
Or you're gonna have to cut something. But it's, if you're going to the bank, you don't have to go back again, you know, make sure the numbers.
How can I cover you? Real quick, do you have numbers on our building and Centerpoint's building? Just the building? Because people are confusing building with site. Centerpoint is a completely different site than what we have. I don't know what they had for infrastructure or something, but I, we're trying to compare raw apples and oranges here again. And if they're gonna do a comparison with Centerpoint or Solon or any of these other fire stations, we need just building, building, not project, see what construction, see what I'm, you see how I'm trying to get apples, apples here?
Yeah, we could come up with, we could back the site costs out of those projects and give you just.
Because those, the site.
Straight building cost.
It was rather significant as what it was told to us when we went and visited. Their site prep took on a lot of it and it took the longest period of time because they had to put basically walls in.
Yeah, they didn't raise it, they didn't raise the entire, all of it.
Yeah, which their cost may be higher.
But it sounds like we're gonna, we're gonna cut likely, we're going into the ground.
Yes, well, I think typically you try to, try to balance cut bill so that, so that you're not bringing dirt in.
You can use one side of the other and not get in.
Right, just cut it from here and put it there. So Centerpoint did have to, did have to bring in bill because the back of their site is a creek, it's apple creek. And so to get the return drive, and the, the other thing, one of the things that came up during the bid process is they elected to allow the, the return apron to go to gravel instead of concrete. Because they put money into the site work of bringing in dirt, pushing dirt to the back. They elected to deduct from concrete down to gravel for that return drive in hopes that they can pave it then in the future.
It, it sounded like that they already did some of that. They fundraised for four hundred and some thousand dollars and they've already added a bunch of concrete is what they did, so.
I've been back there lately, I'll go check it out.
I think Al, what you gave us here, to the point about comparison, I think we have everything we need to compare. I just wanted to clarify, everybody should have the Centerpoint retrospective cost opinion and the opinion of probable cost for three options for actions. And you can go line by line, compare linear feet, square feet, whatever the unit measure is with the cost per unit and the total cost. And what you'll find, what I found is there are increases. It seems like this is a far more robust concrete design. Is that true or is it the same?
Centerpoint, the paving that is out there is all eight inch.
That's all eight inch, well, we, I showed you sixteen inch footings. Concrete form footings, the biggest I see on Centerpoint is ten.
And that's, that's due to wall thickness, yeah, there's some variation in the, in the wall thickness.
But even, even adding all that together, I think for that, that individual difference, we're talking, we're talking less than a hundred thousand for the concrete.
I would say that's fair.
You can go, look, this, this storm shelter lid is a little, is a little more.
Yeah.
Thirty-nine versus twenty-six. There's eachs that I think you can actually get to a good comparison and boil it down, but we're not, I don't see millions here in terms of deviation.
Right. Yeah, that was really, kind of the point of that exercise is to, is to try to bring home how similar the stations are, how similar the designs are, how similar, you know, the cost would be if, if Centerpoint were to go out and bid today.
Al, when you get bids in, do you have an idea on what the variation in the bids for that, that building are? Like from high to low?
It could be anywhere from, I would say typically ten to twenty percent.
Yeah, this is a sheet, I said, which is like half a million dollars or something like that, one for the top to the bottom, two point. There's quite a bit of difference in some of them on one.
Just a clear, Bruce, you're talking on bid day, we have five to nine bidders.
The same project, the spread on the cap sheet.
We, we define ourselves on, on a pretty tight spread because that means you have pretty concise and clear drawings. I would say our, most of ours are around ten percent. You do get the occasional high outlier, but the number will be just a low number.
Are you, are you talking about some of the information that was sent, sorry? About the probable cost of bidding versus the bid date or no? That's not what we're talking about?
Okay.
They're saying that you have nine bidders on bid day. Oh, I see, what's, what are all those bidders bidding from, you know, say from five million to four point five billion, million? Are they within ten or twenty percent? Because what we always said was if you're within that ten or twenty percent, that everybody would bid the same project.
Right.
Otherwise you're worried that somebody got something on, lower high, because now they're, they're not gonna put eight inches, they've got it at six and now you've got a problem. So if you want that tight, tight bid spread among the bidders, then you pick the one.
And we'll see the bids.
That's what you're saying is the one.
We'll see that, that we provide to us once.
For Atkins Fire, once it's out to bid, yeah, once after, after the bids are let, so the, the letting would occur in this room, all the numbers get read out loud and then compile that, put it into the bid tab and that's public information.
And it looks like Centerpoint is about two hundred, two hundred grand range.
Sure.
One point eight seven eight to two point one, two point one nine seven.
And the low bids were separated by four thousand dollars.
Don't be that one.
On almost, on almost two million. I mean, it's tight. It's a, it's a really good day for somebody and it's not a good day for a lot of people. And then Solon Fire, Garland came in about three hundred thousand dollars lowers than the next lowest.
Saw that, yeah.
That allowed them to select, add alternates and they added two old ways to the station as a part of that. So it's, it, you know, again.
Makes you wonder how they got that far apart from everyone else on that.
Solon Fire was a little neat in that, as part of their fundraising campaign, they had the fire department and talked to a lot of local contractors to try to get interested in, in the station and as such encourage them to essentially donate certain goods or services in the form of a low bid. And I think Garland was able to round up the most of those contractors that did in kind donations to help, help out Solon Fire.
Was that a FEMA project?
No, that was not FEMA.
Other questions, council? I have one last though. For what do you for soil boring? Do you, do you have a feel for the variation we need from our cost right now based on soil boring issues?
I would say that the contingency that we're carrying right now could be sufficient to handle most any condition that the soil boring could present. We do have soil boring for this building and I've shared that information with the civil engineers and the structural engineers. And they've designed Atkins Fire accordingly, but still as a matter of practice, we would want to get new soil boring done specific to the fire station just to make sure something doesn't change out in that area. And then typical remediation would be if there's some soft soils, then you might have to take off about two foot of that and depending on the material, you need to recounteract it and use it again on site or you might have to bring in other structural field material. But again, we've had some of that in Solon and some of that in Hiwata and those were well within, well below what we're carrying for the contingency of, of this project. So it should not impact any cost.
Please, what's the estimate please for redact?
For the parking lot redesign that we're showing right here, we worked with the civil engineers, mechanical, electrical, plumbing. And I gave Sandy a contract amendment, I don't remember the exact amount, but it was right under forty thousand dollars.
Are you making that?
Yeah.
Which is under what you put the line in, in the cost opinion was.
Right, yeah, our cost opinion, we were carrying the hundred thousand dollars in there and just to be overly conservative and then hoping we could beat that or beating that by a significant amount.
So with, yeah, with the discretionary things in there, I would call discretionary, furniture allowance, new lockers. And that, the, I mean, we're, we're right around five million, almost exactly, a little less of total project cost.
Right. For the option B.
Yeah, for the option B, thank you, yeah, yeah.
You're right. And that puts us at the three million dollar, three million dollar bond.
Well, probably three and a half. Because five million, if you take the one point four off, then you're at about three and a half unless.
You go for the four point four.
You want to use total cost?
That's why I was asking the question.
What thing? The city's still responsible for the, the total cost.
Well, but.
Because the total cost includes paying its own money.
Correct, no, it's already, I'm assuming you guys are already paid incrementally along the way.
Correct, that's, that's the other one, correct. We've loaned ourselves capital in the, in the. But yes, there are amounts that we have paid up to this point. They all have to be factored into the final amount.
And those amounts are not taken out of this number yet, they're all, the amounts that we've paid the architects and things are included in this estimated total cost.
That's correct, because we have to show the total cost of the project. So we basically paid for two hundred and fifty thousand of it already?
No, our, paid for about seventy percent of the design fee to date and then.
On that, about two hundred and fifty thousand or something like that?
Two, two oh, I think it was two oh six.
Two oh six total, seventy percent.
Seventy percent of that, so about a hundred and forty.
I think the major point was that we didn't intend to cash for it.
That's an inner fund loan and intend to capitalize it. So it is correct, I think, to the discussion to look at the five million. Because, and we can have a separate discussion about this, whether we want to adjust and fund out of the general fund. Bend the budget, take something out somewhere else and continue to lower it by a hundred thousand or four or so. But same conversation about the furniture allowance and the turnout gear lockers, if that needs to turn into a budget item for the fire department in future budget, but. But I would say, yeah, the five is what we're thinking about backing the 1.4 up, just now.
Looking at Spirit Bay, it's like 3.5. Everybody knows me, I'm adamant about the taxpayers paid for pretty much nothing.
It's all tip money. So I think that three and a half, barring the discussion that we would have, maybe we could lower it by a couple hundred thousand more. Maybe. Three and a half, I think, is where we're at right now. Roger.
And depending on.
Just would like to recommend we follow the agenda. We're keeping with questions for someone lying, which I think is fair, but maybe before we have this discussion, we really get to hear what, what folks think, if they want to say something.
Because there's an agenda item for current discussion after.
After.
And Al and Solomon, you'll, you'll be able to answer questions in the discussion.
Any other questions?
Public is talking to you. And then you can ask the architects question after.
Okay, so we move on to public input and public comment. That's a top opportunity for the public to speak on the project. State your name, give your comments. It is not a question and answer session. We can keep the, record the questions to get back to later. That allows everyone to get through the timeframe we have. You would like to speak? Say your name and come to the podium, please.
My name is Dick Lang. I live at 81 Fourth Avenue. I had the privilege of serving on the community for 38 years as a city clerk. And I've got a very different perspective than probably most of the rest of you people in the room. To me, the council is kind of holding the fire station hostage because of lack of the financials of the city. The funding is in line for the fire station. It's been in line for the fire station for months. There's no reason the council can't go ahead and act on this because the funding is there regardless of what options. I've led to see some of these options to get the cost down. But I just think it's two separate things. Dave, I understand your concern. When I was city clerk, every month, the city council got a treasury report that bounced to the bank statement. I don't know what happened in the last 10 years, but I know that hasn't happened. But like I said, I think that my feeling is that you're holding the fire station hostage because of lack of financials that have been done in the past. And I also submitted a letter that you can read.
And gentleman next to you, can we get his question?
We found that the level 211 is sending out. And water and bathtubs confirmed Mary not going to be planted here in this town. I think it's time that city council shits and gets off the pot. Get this fire station approved, this community needs it. The fire department deserves this, a good facility that'll carry us well into the future. I have a question about the cost there. I want to know what the difference in cost goes for the reduction in square footage, not one option. Decide to deduct for that square footage in the building. You know, the time when you do building cost in square foot is what I'm asking.
Right. 460 about a square foot. And that's about 700 square foot. It'd probably be a little, a little less than that because that's aberrative. The less expensive side of the building without the, yeah, what did you get there?
Is there any machinery on the exterior of the building? It must have brought to the city hall.
It's, we had a photo loan earlier, so it's a, like a dark gray brick and then some white and meat and gray metal panels. So it's meant to look harmonious with, with city hall. So city hall is a mix of brick and some panel and then the fire station would be a mix of different, breaking different panel.
Most of the guys have chandeliers too, so it's mansion though.
Yeah, that's exactly right, yeah.
That's nice. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Getting back to the city council. You guys get this approved and get it going here. We gotta get it going. We never gonna get there, we couldn't even be done. You want this project done and started? Okay.
Yes, sir.
Steve Mason, 6547, that line road table. I want to make a perfect disclaimer. I'm in big support of the volunteer fire service. I'm in good support of it and I respect them a lot. I would like to share some information, recent information from National Volunteer Fire Company. On February 5th, 2024, Federal Occupational Safety and Health Administration, OSHA, published a new proposed emergency response standard, which includes extensive new safety and health standards to replace the existing fire brigade standard. If adopted as it is, this proposed standard would bring immense challenges to the volunteer departments and some may even be forced to shut down. The proposed standard is 608 pages and includes fire and EMS services. A recent 90-day extension was granted until the first week of August for additional public comments. I would seriously consider this matter before any funds were spent. The proposal will have an impact on the volunteer and paid fire service. I'd like to have you look at the big picture of this fire station. It's not just the building, the site. When a person builds a house, he has to maintain it. Along with, you know, for example, property taxes and insurance. Now, there's several insurance companies that are pulling out of state to buy the both commercial and residential. I gave a presentation a couple of months ago here and in it, I had a series of questions that I asked as far as what overhead there is to the fire service. For example, pumper test, SDVA testing or SDVA tester, workman's comp. One of the things I asked in that, in that paper was, was there going to be an insurance on this new building? And there was other questions I asked. You can pull back and read that. I gave you all copies. And look at the overall picture, what it's going to cost. It's not just the building. It's not a one-time cost. These costs go ongoing. And this equipment, these firefighters understand, SDVAs, hose, gear, they all go up. You know, and then as these standards come apart or come, come, uh, come to fruition, you know, they, they have a life expectancy as far as when you have to replace them. You know, finding out, connecting with them. On the back of this paper, I'm gonna give it to you, there's an article here. I'll give it to you. And what that article is, is out of our fire magazine for the, out of firefighter association. It's those of 14,000 firefighters in Iowa. So I copied an article out of there to try to help you decipher some of this information. Thank you.
Okay.
Dave Kirk, 46 CM. I would just like to let you know by the choices you make on the fire department building, if you go to the lesser choices, the first one will be proposed. Your driveway outside of the front doors is about 20 feet. Our fire truck is 35 feet long. We will not be able to pull it out the front door and do anything because it will be 15 feet into the roof. If you're gonna redesign with one of these older options, you better take that into consideration.
Hello, Mayor Meyer, want to give your name. The purpose of communication is to speak first to understand. And then to speak to be understood. So I hope that today we can listen to the words that others have spoken to try to understand their point of view. I don't think anyone has come here today to be convinced or have somebody else's point of view shown upon them. But I hope that you could take a second to try to understand my point of view. Breakfasts, lunch, dinners, softball games, volleyball games. I'll never get them back with my father because he was sacrificing that time. Not just his time, my time, to do what these volunteers do. And I'm happy to come out the other side and feel very proud of our community. Very proud of what my father did. But I also remember trying to wedge myself between the pumper and between CPR days. Because there was really no space at the back of the department. And the lockers were always so tightly full. Things spilling over shouldn't always seem very safe to me at the time. And I have seen the department that I grew up in mold over time and adapt, which are always opportunities. But I hope that you can understand exactly what a lot of people may be saying, which is that this is also an investment in our community. So I urge you to find a middle way. There is a middle way. Maybe we aren't going to go with the cheapest option that some may like. And maybe we're not pulling out all the bells and whistles that others might like. And trust me, if I had my brothers, we'd be going with the biggest one. But we don't need a touch and a haul. We do need something that's functional. And I hope and pray that this community can find the middle way.
Anyone else? Thank you very much. We'll move on to the record of correspondence received.
Yes, Mayor, we received 15 signed letters that were addressed to the city council and forwarded on. City council, we had eight in support of the original plan, four in support of the station generally, and three that had questions or comments.
And those have been provided to the council?
Yes, they have.
Can you say that again? Eight in support of the original?
Sure, will that be a bit? 15 totals, eight in support of the original plan, four in support of the station, a, a fire station being built, and three that had questions or comments. I, I will admit, I'm still getting, I, since the media started, we've gotten a couple more in, but I haven't been able to let them, they'll be getting those. And we encourage comments.
Yeah, you can, you can always take and send those letters in. And those are public record too, by the way. So at this point, time to move on to council discussion on the fire station design options. Keep in mind, item number seven has been removed in the agenda, but moving on, item number six, council discussion of the fire station design options. So that will end with recap of option A. As the plan's ready to go, option B, C, and design options required.
I guess also, sir. To me, option A has a lot of possibilities for deducting, do some modifications. B and C, I don't like the delay in the additional engineering time. I'm concerned that could run into our construction things. One of my major concerns, I've been talking to a considerable number of firemen. Our firemen have been dealing with this problem for three and a half years now. Fighting getting to the fire station, fighting getting the trucks out of town. A considerable number of them are really upset and I don't blame them. If you look at the numbers, last year we had 200 calls. The average number of firemen on those calls was eight. That's one-third of the 23 firemen we've got. If you start digging down into the figures, like most volunteer organizations, you're gonna find that 80% of the work is done by 20% of the people. That's just facts. Right now, and to take nothing away from the ones that aren't the major. When I grew up, 80, 85% of the firemen lived and worked in the city of Athens. That's not the case. A good share, 70, 80% of them worked at Cedar Rapids. They can't make the calls. You're looking at a small core of 10 or less that are handling 80 or 90% of the calls. If we lose two or three of those firemen because they're upset, our fire ISO rating is gonna look great. I did some checking on my particular situation with my company. If our rating goes from four, which it is now, to six, which it is in Keystone, it's five in Van Horn and Flurstown. Going from a two to a six in a $250,000 home will raise my insurance $238 a year. That's a fact. And if we lose these firemen, we aren't gonna get them back with our. It took a lot of extra effort and extra time on our fire department to get that ISO rating down to a four. That's extremely unusual. Mark Liberty, actually New Hall, I don't know how they get, they've got a four. And, but most volunteer fire departments will not come up with a fire rating like that. And we've enjoyed that privilege for an awful long time. I can't cut costs. These guys are getting paid literally nothing. They're giving up of their time and effort. And a few small things, one of the big things that I really want to see is that personal shower bathroom. We give them a place to change clothes and take a shower. They might be able to spend an extra half hour, an hour at a school event with their kids. We're getting a lot of calls during rush hour. They're out getting on Highway 30. Six, seven o'clock, they're still there cleaning up their hearing stuff. They have to go home, shower, they miss the whole thing. They have to go home, shower, they miss the whole thing. They don't have clothes. They're family. Going to Van Mark to drop and change your clothes off in the fire station, there's people there. They could take their shower and they could spend time with their family. I can't put a price on that. If you people can, they're good luck. I'm done. I'm going to... If we get the bids and the bids come in high or low, we can work with that. But that gives us enough options and it gives us a decent fire station. These people that were on this committee worked for three years now, and these are citizens of Atkins that are paying taxes, that have done a lot of hard work to get us the best plan, not nothing fancy, not anything separate. I hear people talking about a state-of-the-art gym. We don't have a gym. We're giving them a floor space. They already have all their equipment. There's been so much negative publicity on social media about things that are not factual, that I'm just getting fed up. I'm done. We go here, I don't. Go for it.
Well, this time, I think we clarified enough the difference between total project cost and bid cost. So we call it bid cost, but we don't actually have bids. So it's really project cost minus these ancillary costs on these sheets that are available on the website. Fees for design, printing, testing, turnout of gear lockers, furniture allowance, and a construction... Construction contingency, that's a five percent on top of the ten percent. Is that contingency earmarked differently or colored in some way?
So the project contingency, that five percent, that's on the total, total project. That's the money that we recommend you guys set aside for any construction-related issues that come up.
That's the five.
That's the five.
So what's the ten?
The ten is an estimating contingency that I refer to as nuts and bolts. So we don't, our list, as you see, you know, fits basically to one sheet, but I don't have line items for how many boxes of nails are bought, or how many nutty bolts are bought. So that's, that's to capture anything that's not on that one page. A typical contractor cost spreadsheet would be anywhere from ten to twenty pages. And that's just, we're not at, that takes an army of people to put those numbers together. We're not that army, so ours is a more consolidated list, so that, that basically is a catch-all bucket.
Would you be willing to throw out of your professional experience, what, what amount of that contingency usually... Is there an average of the ten, either the ten or the five, that, that just doesn't, you know, never gets to it, or it's rare? You know, you've got to be in a tail scenario.
Sure. So again, I use Hi-Watt Fire as an example. That's under construction now. We, they carried a five percent contingency, which I think was about two-hundred-and-seventy-thousand dollars. They've used, and the largest risk in construction is just coming out of the ground. Once the project's out of the ground, it's, everything's pretty well-known. So that project's out of the ground, it's mostly buttoned up. They've only used about thirty thousand dollars of that two-hundred-and-seventy-thousand-dollar contingency. So they still have about two-hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars left that's owed back to them at the end of the job if it doesn't get spent.
Just to clarify, because I'm learning here, is that the estimating contingency or the project?
That's the project contingency.
What about the estimated?
So that's, again, that's a number, that's a factor that we use just to get our number to where we think it needs to be to include everything for the construction of the project. That's, you know, box of nails, nuts and bolts, you know, just the things that we don't have specific line items for, but we know go into every construction project. So we have that ten percent in every construction estimate that we do.
Is there any visibility on where that sits for the Hi-Watt Station?
So they used a different process where they had a contractor on board. So that contractor basically chased all those numbers down and built that twenty-page spreadsheet. So that's where that twenty-page spreadsheet captured every single, every single cost, down to the box of nails and nuts and bolts. Does that, does that make sense?
Yeah. So we should, the way we're doing this, we should know that number when the bids come in.
Yeah, that, so that ten percent estimated contingency wouldn't show up as a line item once the bids are in.
It's counted for in there, in there more precise.
Right, right. That's...
Calculational.
Yeah. Because, you know, every plumber's got to know exactly how many fittings, exactly, you know, how, how much length of pipe. And what we're doing is we're estimating it based on previous projects, that for a plumbing job of this magnitude, it should cost in this range, but they're going to have it down to the, down to the plumbing fittings, and down to the nuts and bolts and box of nails.
Okay. Yeah, thank you. I just want to make sure that, I think, all of us should understand, whenever we're comparing these numbers, they need to be off the same line. We're already making it challenging by trying to compare numbers across time. The bid number that's going to come back is that total building, that site and contractor fees. That's the comparable number to the bid that will come back, how much that can move.
Right. That should be the number in blue on your sheet, which would be the, the construction cost.
And so for option A, that's six million.
That's correct.
Option B, that's four-point-four-five million.
That's also correct.
Option B, how long is the driveway?
You're talking about the east driveway? So it's ten feet to the property line, but obviously the property line is, is a set distance away from the road. And then the distance from the property line to the road is, I think, another forty feet or so?
Thirty feet, thirty. Twenty to thirty feet.
Yeah. I'd say, yeah, say it's about thirty feet of length of, of concrete if you go from the edge of the building to the street where it sits today.
Only concern, it does cross the sidewalk?
It, so the property line, you know, sidewalks are usually put off the property line, so the property line is the closest demarcation we have right now to where the sidewalk would be.
The sidewalk, that's going to have to terminate at the driveway, right?
Most cities require the sidewalk path to continue across the driveway, so you still have to maintain the prescribed cross slope and everything. So, and it kind of depends on how the city, so the code is written, but some even have you soft-cut lines so that it appears that the sidewalk continues across the apparatus drive.
But presently, it goes to nowhere, and I don't know if there's too much traffic on it.
I would recommend that we would construct a driveway in case a sidewalk were added on in the future, because you don't know what twenty years down the line might bring. But back matter is day one, it's going to end at the driveway.
That's the thing for all three options anyways.
Correct.
What's the, what's the slope going to be on this driveway? Does that change for the options?
It, it was only, they've only designed the slope on option A. And I have no good drawings over there to find the slope, but we can do that. It's probably five percent or less. I'd have to double-check. And then options B and C haven't been designed yet, so I don't know exactly what that slope would be. That's part of the reason that options B and C, though, that that floor elevation of the fire station would likely be lower, because it's got to be closer to match where the street is at, because we don't have as much driveway to make up that, that fall. But I think we would probably design the driveway, again, probably around that five percent mark, and then see where the building elevation fell from there. So shorter driveway, you don't want to get steeper, you want to keep the same, you know, you can't be too steep on the driver of the fire trucks, because they've got breakover angles and you don't want to bottom it out.
That was a concern.
Yeah.
That was a concern, it was voiced to me, and so I just want to, it sounds like you're not concerned, or at least Snyder was not concerned.
Right, right. We would, we would design to that, so that it worked as it should, and not be a building over hill coming out of the fire station.
Okay. Well, for the firefighters in attendance, thank you guys for coming out. I, I hope that, I hope that the team feels supported by the community. I can understand why this has been a contentious subject, and I think the longer, the longer it goes, it doesn't help us with that. This city has to balance a lot of things in this decision. And so I just, I just don't want any firefighters to think that, not also considering, just me personally, but I would believe the council as well, what you guys sacrifice, what your requirements are, and it's, it's a necessary service for the community. You got to try. My, my goal for this council would, as we become, you know, move into the future and we start to get the things that we need, that the plans we put in place start to bear fruit, we need to become a consensus-seeking council. So drawing hard lines, saying, "I will not do this, there's no way I would do this," is not necessarily helpful if we're going to try to be a consensus-seeking council. So I'm not going to offer, I think, you know, I'm not going to stand on the ledge and say it's this or nothing. For me, I think on option B, we're at a three-and-a-half-million-dollar bond. I think with some fundraising efforts that we absolutely can do, something like three-hundred-thousand dollars, option B comes through with no burden on the taxpayer, no incremental burden on the taxpayer. The mezzanine dorms are no longer involved. The space is there, it can be built in the future. If the growth is there, it's an option. It's there and it's available. The reconstruction of the parking lot is no longer considered. So that, that right there saves about a half a million dollars. I think that's worth considering. I do understand, that's not all gain, right? It's a gain with some costs in terms of, of a shorter driveway. And depending on what we do with the back, the return apron on the south side of the building, it's also traffic in front of City Hall on pavement that's not, that's not designed for that load, or at least with shortening the line. So accurate. So I think that all needs to be considered. I'd like to hear from other folks what their thoughts are and, and see if there's a way we can become a consensus-seeking council.
Any thoughts, counsel?
I would agree with your comments. I would hope to become a consensus-seeking council and become more of a team in these efforts. I do want to express my gratitude for you guys and the sacrifice and the service they provide for the community is not gone unnoticed. And I think everyone in this room wants to come to a solution. I think we can all agree that we need to, you know, make some decisions here. As far as coming to a consensus goes, you know, we've got, we have the original option. I appreciate the work that, that you guys put in and I'm seeing how there's, like, finding some lower-cost options, and I think they're really good options. There are a lot of perspectives in the community. I was glad to see all the written comments and support and all the verbal ones here tonight, too. But there's a lot, a lot of perspectives, and I'm not sure everyone's going to get everything they want, you know? So I think these two options are good ones, where, you know, we all just have to bend a little bit. And I think keeping the momentum, or, you know, keeping the, the project going now that we have approval from FEMA and good financial plans to Dick's point, I mean, Maggie's put some good plans together to finance the project, and I think they're responsible. I think coming, these two options are good. I, I like the first option too, but I'm willing to look at these, you know, option B and C. And there's a lot to consider there too, but I think they're good, I don't want to call them compromises, but they're good options that we're building a fire station for what the community needs as we grow. Although it might not be the first option, it's still a good one that meets our needs of the community. So I'm supportive of, of those two going forward. I know we're not voting tonight, but I think they're, they're good options to look at going forward. I too just hope that we can kind of come to a more of a consensus and put together as a team and, and keep this project moving forward.
I visited the Centerpoint Fire Station, and I met with an awesome individual up there, and he's no different than any of you guys here. And he's very proud of what he's got up there as a facility. And I was very impressed with his caringness for the city, the city themselves, the people. He was proud of what was going on in Centerpoint with all the new construction, with all the new businesses that were there. He told us about new stuff that was coming because he was, he was kept in the loop. It was, it was really a nice visit, and it really opened my eyes to things that I, I probably wouldn't, if I wouldn't have visited there, I wouldn't have been able to see it. I also met with this fire department when I first got on, and basically, they told me to keep the project going. They didn't care, I don't, I'm sure that they love to have absolutely every bell and whistle, but the, the Centerpoint Fire Station doesn't have a lot of the stuff. And I asked those questions of why you didn't have wafering and stuff like that, and there was really true thought that went into it. And I truly believe that you guys have been shortsighted. I think that three years was way too long, four years. I, I, we shouldn't be sitting here today even discussing this. It should have been done long ago. And it would probably save us a heck of a lot more money. And again, I appreciate everybody, everything that you do for the city. I think everybody does. But honestly, guys, I'm going to tell you, it does come down to dollars and cents. It's just like the budget. We have got to make sure that we do things right, we plan our work and we work our plan. And the same thing goes into this project, that we make sure that it fits the needs, number one. Number two, that we take out any fluff in it in order, in order to make sure that our citizens don't bear the responsibility. As I walked around this town and I talked to a lot of individuals, I heard an overwhelming response of, "Are we spending five, six million dollars for a fire station?" And it was very negative. We want a bit, and again, I want to back up here. Everybody's looking at that bottom-line dollar. No matter what, that's what they're looking at. Everybody, including me. Do we, do we ask for that full amount? I still have that question in my mind to determine what we do there and how we go about it. Again, I have been for this fire station since day one. I think you guys should have had it long ago. I think you guys should have had it long ago. I truly had a dollar figure in my mind of where I thought we should be at because I was basing it off of the data that I received, that I thought was good information. I truly wanted to know what the differences were so we could actually address those issues. My, my thing is, is that I don't want this to be like our budget where we just say, okay, we're gonna approve it all just because we have to approve a budget. What we've gotta do is we gotta determine what we can afford as a town, point blank. It's not, we all care about everybody here, at least I hope we do, I really do. But what we can't have is just approve it just because and do willy-nilly without thinking about it. We gotta think about the water situation in this town. We gotta, because that does, if we don't have water, we don't put out any fires. I know that some people say we oughta take that money and we oughta, we're borrow against that and put it on our water bill. That's not the option you're gonna have to think for our citizens. I don't know, I think we can come to some type of an agreement on what we're gonna do, but we should be looking at a dollar figure. That's where we're gonna prove to, that's what we should be doing. That's what should have been done all along, in my opinion. How much money do we have to spend? And then we go there. I'm gonna leave it at that again, I wanna appreciate everything that everybody's done. And it's just, it's uh, I gotta make decisions and I wanna make the right decisions for everybody.
So I'm actually gonna first just kinda tell the little story about the fire department. It was twelve twenty-three, two thousand and twelve. My daughter was choking, she was only a week old. Eight inches of snow had blown outside. I didn't even know if the person was in here, but I had to call the fire department. It was the longest eight minutes of my life as my daughter couldn't breathe. So I understand what it had to take for you guys to get to my house right down the street. So when you hear some of the comments with everything that's happened since the duration of today, when you say, I think I might quit, a building is just a building to house you. You're there for the residents of this town. You're here for me, you're here for everyone up here and for your neighbor. Trust me, we wanna give you the best building possible at the best budget possible. And believe me, I know what it means to be attacked in this town. Trust me. I know what it's like to be loved in this town and to be hated. So when you hear, when, if you're, if that's something that you're thinking in your head, I just ask you to check yourself. And as someone who's done foster care for four, sixteen years and I've had over twenty kids come through my house, there's never been one time that said, you know, I'm done with that kid. I want him out of my house and call somebody who's adopted too. You're there to fight for that person no matter what their circumstance may or may not be. We're here to fight for this community and that's what we're up here trying to do. Nobody says this is gonna be easy. Believe me, I'd love to give you absolutely everything. I wish we could have everything, but we can't. We tell that to our kids every day, I hope, so they have a learning lesson in life. We all go through ups and downs. And right now, this is our situation in this town between our ridiculous budget, the numbers that don't make sense, the indoor windows that are being made, to trying to get to the right plan, option. And we have to take every factor into, into account. As someone who's talked to significantly amount of people, how many has some of the residents and firefighters or just your neighbor who can't afford the taxes to go up even a couple of dollars on. Mostly people in this town that have, need a five hundred, six, seven hundred thousand dollar houses, wouldn't even think about it. We go to the store, we don't think about it. But there's some people in this older community that are set on a budget. And believe me, working in financial and banking for the last twenty-five years of my life, I hear every story. So we, as a council, have to think about that. You as a community have to think about that. Every volunteer firefighter has to think about the time that they have to stake away from their kids, their family. I get it, we're up here, nine o'clock at night. It's not an easy decision to make. Yes, we're asking for some grace. And we may get it right, we may get it wrong. But like Jim said, some of the stuff that's being said out there needs to stop on both sides. Because we are trying to do our best. As for options, I, I, I've made it clear that I think it should all be paid through TIP and through the one point four million that we're getting, so pretty much no tax burden. To, you know, to raise some money. I know over the last three or four years, we haven't had the, the volunteer stuff going on. For whatever reason, may or may not be true, but it is seen in the community that it's not happening. So it comes up often.
What do you want us to do?
I, I, I don't know that what the answer is. I, I don't know. On this, on this point, I, I, I'm just, I will, I will help raise, and so will I. So I, I'm just, I just wanna say, we will get there. And I think it's gonna happen pretty quickly, really do need that. And that's all I have to say. Yep?
Can Al clarify the quote, fitness room as to what that room really is required by FEMA? So we can put that to bed?
Sure. So we designed the, the fitness room and the restroom stack as the code-required storm shelter for the facility. And it's sized uh, to be able to hold everybody that would be in the, the training room if there was an evening like tonight where you got a room full of people like this, they gotta go find some place to shelter. So the training room was sized for fifty people. And between the, the two restrooms and the, the weight room, that, that would hold those fifty people. And then amongst the
But Center Point is fifty foot people too in their, their training area. And they only have the two bathrooms. And their discussion was, their, their chief told them, we're not going to build a workout area because there would be two, we, we would need two people up here when we were working out. Therefore, we are not going to have that as a burden on the, the fire department. That's what was told us.
So Center Point uh, decided to harden just the two restrooms, that's correct, just for the city hall staff next door. So they, they've not decided to make any provisions for the fifty persons?
So it's not required?
The, the storm shelter is code-required and the size of the storm shelter is determined by the authority having jurisdiction. And in Center Point, we worked with Lynn County because they're the authority having jurisdiction there. In Atkins with the lack of a full-time authority having jurisdiction, we went with the consensus-based decision from other fire departments like Solon and other department tipped in to provide space for, for the fifty people in the training area.
I think it's important to point out, this is not a community storm shelter.
It is, that's correct. So that was, that was the point that we made at, at Center Point as well, is that they didn't wanna do a community shelter. So a community-sized shelter would be something like the, the Palo City Hall with the attached gym, which we also designed. And they, exactly, they have to staff it, you know, and they advertise it with signs and it is open to the community. That's not required by law and they were able to pursue a different funding source for that. Uh, what is required is to provide, since it's a critical facility, to provide shelter for those who are reasonably expected to be in that facility at a time. You're exactly right. It's, it's, it's a difference between the two, um, but it's, it's essentially a judgment call of how many people you would have designed that facility for. In the overall scope of the budget, it's some more concrete and some more C M U. It does add cost, don't have that dollar figure in front of you right now. But it's, it's part of what, what's in the plans presently, so at least that's incorporated in the total cost.
Okay. With that, I think we'll wrap up the meeting tonight. I wanna thank the department members for being here tonight. It's my pleasure to work with them on a fairly regular basis. The capstones of any community in Iowa are its fire station, its city hall, its library. Those are the functions that your city's required to have. And it's very unfortunate that we were in the face of a duration that destroyed our building. It didn't happen in all communities, but it happened here. So we took that task on just because of where we're at. Because it's one of those things you face in life, pick it up and you go with it. We've worked with the plan that has been laid out before us as far as requirements we have to meet. The city councils over time have selected a committee, hired architects, sought input from a lot of different disciplines within the construction industry. We've also had to seek guidance and, and authority to continue from our partners, FEMA, Iowa Homeland Security. We've had on the funding side of things, we've had to work with the county, the school district, the fire district itself as well. So there's a lot of parties in play here as well as the city. And the facility will serve all those entities, whether you're driving up and down the highway, whether you're at a school again, um, whether you're out in that rural setting someplace or within the city limits, all those places will depend upon the people that house in the facility that this um, building will become. So it's important that we take into those considerations. It's not just a city building, it sits here in the city, but it's funded by all those entities. And so they have a statement, their requirements to meet and I believe it's a good thing to provide the best opportunity we can for the success of the department, which is the right equipment, the right place, the um, the correct type of facility and win consideration with those experts that have come before us to offer their opinions. I do appreciate the, the time that the department has put in reviewing things, answering questions on where light switches go, where, where the entryway faces, what, what type of door handles there are. There's just so many different things to consider and those have taken months and months of time to consider as well as providing write-ups and information on the old station so we can get funding for the new one. So again with that, I appreciate your time, guys, men and women. And your dedication speaks highly to the meetings I was at recently. Both of them had fire cops go out and sit there and wait. So it's an active group and they're filling in shoes all over the county. Our, our chief is working on the countywide communication systems. It will benefit a good portion of the county and even into Lynn County and so and so. There's a lot of things that go on in the background, whether you're on EMS, whether you're on fire. It's a, just a key item within our community. So I would encourage strong support for it and I think it will help us in the future as we go twenty, thirty, fifty years. We've got an old building uptown, it's over a hundred years old. So I expect this one to be there deserving us well in that time. Thank you for your time, everyone. And I think we can announce that the next record council meeting will be on the twenty-eighth at six-thirty P M. That will conclude our business for the session. What did you do with your second? Okay, with the roll call, all in favor? I, I, the first thing? Here, I'm, and you, Jerry, thank you, everyone.